We call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council Order. Today is April eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Let's start with the invocation by Andy Baker, Director of Outreach, Central Reform Church.
Let us pray together. Father in heaven, thank you for this group. Thank you for calling us here. God continue to watch over our city. Guide us as we make decisions. Guide us as we prosper. And God let this be a city that does many great things. We pray for elections as they approach over the next couple of months. Will you be in those? And God bless tonight's meeting. Grant wisdom and guidance to all that are here. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Do join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Burnett.
Here.
Calgery.
Here.
Jimenez.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Frustay.
Here.
Walling.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on, first item up is community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We ask that they keep statements brief. Time will be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor, we ask that those be asked prior to speaking to the full council so that way concerns can be properly researched and perhaps even answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time?
My name is Brad Hodges. I'm here on behalf of Fellowship Bible Church. Just wanted to take a minute to introduce you a little bit to our building project, which is on your agenda. The site plan for that anyway is on your agenda later in the evening. So first of all, just wanted to express my appreciation for the chance to come up here and present our plan to you in person. Appreciate all the work that you all do. It was about a year ago that our church began planning for a modest six thousand square foot addition to our building. It includes two levels, the main level and then a basement. We did this to make room for some more adequate, more functional nursery and toddler space. We've had an increase in the number of young children in our church. Also, another purpose to this addition would be to improve the accessibility of our building. We have included in our plans an elevator and also plans for rebuilding stairways in order that we can make them less steep. And we've been talking about a northeast addition to our building for as long as I've been there. I think it's been more than fifteen years that this topic would just come up time and again. How do we address space concerns? And that's one area that we thought would be an option. So since the project began last year, last fall and last winter, we went to the board to the Board of Adjustment twice to obtain variances for setbacks on, I believe it's I Street, and then again on A Avenue. So two times we went to the Board of Adjustment, presented general plans for the building, received the variance for the setbacks, and then I believe it was sometime after the first of this year that we were notified that because of the amount of square footage we're intending to add, that a full site plan would be required. So we went to our engineers and they developed a site plan for us and submitted that. And then city staff came back with twenty-two requirements, twenty-two additional requirements, before we could proceed with a building permit. So in the meantime, city staff worked with our engineer and whittled that list down to eleven items, and that's what's on your agenda today. Again, the addition is on the northeast corner of our block. The majority of the items or the requirements recommended by city staff is on the southeast corner of our property. Mainly, it includes sidewalk and curb and gutter. They're on opposite corners, and quite honestly, the requirements are completely outside the scope of what we intended to be our plan, both in terms of the cost that it would impose and then also just the complexity of having to reconfigure our entire parking lot. So we've gone to the congregation, we've presented the plan, we've raised funds, and gone through commitments to raise additional funds. Okay. And these items were not in our project. So what we are asking the city to do is approve our site plan, or city council, to approve our site plan as we presented it and waive the requirements. I think we're asking for a waiver of six, eight of those requirements. And just approve the site plan as we presented it so that we can proceed with the building permits and the project itself. So thank you very much.
My name is Adele Johnson, also a member of Fellowship Bible Church. And just to briefly just speak to you on the console in regards to this project. As Brad said, a growing congregation, we have a number of little ones, and we really do need the space for both nursery and toddlers and Sunday school space, and that's what this is all about. As Brad did mention also is that we went before the congregation based on what we had talked to the city about in regards to what was needed to get this building on the northeast corner of the property. And based on what we were told and what the bids or what the architect came in with the cost, we went before the congregation as far as what kind of funds were needed. Both the bids coming in were greater than what we expected, but also with what's expected from the city in this whole project adds a substantial amount to what needs to be done if we have to go with all of the requirements that have been requested according to the site plan that we didn't expect. And so we really are just coming to the console to ask for relief. We do recognize the A Avenue project and its significance to the coming into the city. And so we have incorporated that portion of it, and we do want to do that portion, but ask for relief on the other part. So with that, I just want to thank you for considering this, and we'll hear what you have to say. Thank you so much.
Mr. Johnson, could I ask you a question, please? You referenced the project budget, and then you referenced the additional items would increase it substantially. Do you have any numbers that you can apply to those to help me as far as what the budget of the project is and then the additional amounts that the site plan would require?
Okay. Well, we're basing it basically hoping that we could stay under nine hundred thousand. The cost of the project came in significantly above that just for the, from the architect's plans. Adding to that, the city's estimate maybe a hundred thousand dollars on top of that is going to be required, kind of a minimum, if we have to do all of it. And it is a significant portion. At this point, we were concerned that even being able to go ahead with the project with because we're going to have to trim down the total building costs, but also the added cost of what's being required through the site plan is going to significantly add to that. So I don't know if that helps you.
No, that's perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is the consent agenda. I do have a request to pull a couple items off. So items H and I, the one having to do with the revenue purpose statement and also the one for the grant application to the Iowa DOT. So I'll pull those off and we can vote on those separately. But the remainder of the consent agenda, these are all things that are routine in nature. A lot of it has to do with receiving reports or approval of various beer and liquor licenses. So do we have a motion for approval?
Okay, move.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Calgery.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Frustay.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Now, moving on to item number H. This one is the consideration of a resolution amending the city's revenue purpose statement that's used for fee revenues that are collected from natural gas and electricity franchise fees. During the fiscal year 2017 budget meeting, the city manager's recommended budget proposed two new items to be funded using franchise fees. The first was an expectation to cash flow the city's match for the CDBG downtown facade grant. So we front that using franchise fees money until the tip revenues could reimburse the city. The second was funding a community development coordinator position in its entirety from the franchise fees. So for that to occur, as recommended in the budget, an amendment to the existing franchise fee revenue purpose statement has to be adopted, and it's requested from staff to proceed with the amendment to the revenue purpose statement and expand the list to include economic development activities and projects. So I won't read the rest of it. I think we've got the gist of it. Do we have a motion to do that?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Why did you pull? Who was it?
Well, Tom, did you have any other comments?
Yeah, I pulled them both. I just wanted to read. I didn't think it belonged in the consent agenda, and I thought it ought to be read. I told the mayor upfront. I'm for both of them, but I just, I think for the public's benefit.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Burnett.
Yes.
Calgery.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Frustay.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Now, item I. Wanted to be read out. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application with the Iowa DOT for a future land use plan and the creation of a draft airport height restriction ordinance. This item was requested from the city manager's office seeking permission to resubmit a grant application on the city's behalf with the Iowa Department of Transportation's Aviation Division. The grant funding staff is seeking would provide seventy percent funding for a required land use plan and the development of an airport height restriction ordinance. The proposed south-central regional airport and the U.S. Highway sixty-three bypass will require the acquisition of land to accommodate the ultimate development of these public improvements. If these proposed improvements are implemented, existing land uses are expected to change. Recognizing that existing land use patterns may change, the city of Oskaloosa recognizes the need to develop a future land use plan for the area that would be affected as a result of the two public improvements being implemented. The city desires to advocate future land uses that are compatible with the proposed south-central regional airport as well as the U.S. Highway sixty-three bypass. So to that end, the city desires to develop a future land use plan for an area described generally as the northwest quadrant of the city and the area extending to the northwest. The existing comprehensive future land use plan may be amended to incorporate future land use recommendations. And the existing zoning district regulations will be reviewed. Zoning district regulations having to do from the city of Oskaloosa provide a tool that implements future land use plans. And since the imaginary surfaces of the proposed airport extend over the incorporated city and corporate boundary, the city desires to develop an airport height restriction zoning ordinance for consideration. The purpose of the airport height restriction zoning ordinance is to protect the airport airspace and approaches to the proposed south-central regional airport. The Haski County will be encouraged to adopt similar language, and staff, of course, is recommending approval of the items presented. Does anyone care to comment on this? Okay, do we have a motion for approval?
So move.
Okay. Now, any comments? Roll call, please.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed.
Calgery.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Frustay.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us into the regular agenda. First is a consider request from Mahaska Community Recreation Foundation to report on the quarterly activities of MCRF. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Candace Klein, and I'm the Activities Manager at Mahaska Community Recreation Foundation, and I'm just going to give you a brief little summary over the quarterly progress report. Does everyone have one just to verify we're good? Okay. So just to put this out there, if anyone would like a progress report in the future, they are available at the MCRF office located at the Lacey Recreation Complex or at mcrf.info or, yes, at mcrf.info, our website. As, okay, going into our stuff tonight, we have four things I'd like to talk about. We have recreation, community support, building for the future, and then also future events. So starting out with recreation, obviously very important for us. And so we did hold registration at the MCRF office. Actually, Babe Ruth and Mahaska County Soccer Club came in, and so we are well into season with them. We did host a annual Lacey Health and Safety Meeting also during the month of February. This is mandatory for all user groups, just to make sure that we're following all of our procedures. Play It Forward launched its fourth year, and we are still giving away a number of cleats just to help give a little clarification. Play It Forward is a program we started of recycled youth sports equipment, and so it was kind of an effort to go green, but also to help kids who maybe don't have the equipment needed to play in recreational sports. Along with that, we also are in the planning stages for a skate-scooter event to take place at the Oskaloosa Urban Park this spring. And then moving into community support, as you are so well aware, we are completely dependent upon donations, also hotel-motel tax from the city, and then in addition to that, volunteers. And so we just want to say our greatest appreciation to all of our volunteers who help out. We have really been fortunate. We want to thank the city of Oskaloosa for letting us borrow their Vermeer brush tripper or chipper, excuse me. And that was a great help. We were able to take that out onto the Mahaska Community Recreation Trail and clear back some brush for safety purposes. It's looking really good. It was also a partnership with Musco, and so we thank them for their staff. MCG also came out and volunteered some hours preparing for future use of internet television and then also some broadcasting to happen at the stadium, so they installed some things out there. And then we also had a lot of soccer volunteers, but namely Carl Otto has been fantastic. He's the director of fields for Mahaska County Soccer Club, and he comes out, lines the fields. And so it's really great to see the volunteers on board and helping out with recreation in Oskaloosa. We're very fortunate. Also, for community support, I'd like to note that in February, we did have our sixth annual MCRF bowling tournament, and we were able to raise over seventy-four hundred dollars, which was used for equipment, tools, and upgrades for our youth sports activities. And with that, we had over fifty businesses and many community members who were either donating, participating, sponsoring lanes, that type of thing. So it was a great event, and we look forward to doing that again in the future. Moving on to building for the future, Musco did help with a little facelift at the Oskaloosa Urban Park. They did a relamp over there and then also added an eight-foot flat rail at the skate park, and then put a couple figurines on some basketball court lights and then pull the poles. And then in addition to that, they did do some repair to the cattle panels that are above the fencing. Along with building for the future, we also are working on trail construction. That's just a continual thing, but we did receive a seventy-five thousand dollar Wellmark grant, which is helping with some expansion and development that's going on in University Park. And then also, as you probably have noticed, we have a large new MCRF maintenance building, which is being well-used by Chad Reefer, our facilities manager. It has been fantastic to get in there this winter and spring and just absolutely wonderful. So we're working on also cleaning up some of the older buildings that are around the complex right now. And then for April and June events, obviously, we're already a little bit into April, so we have our first tournament under our belt, and we have for the next five weekends tournaments. So if you want to see action, come out to Lacey, that's where it'll be. And for, as a tourism standpoint, our businesses can expect to see, you know, increase at restaurants as well as shopping facilities in town. We currently are starting our Little League games tonight, which is very exciting. Mutual Baseball-S baseball has also been out there, as well as Babe Ruth. Mahaska County Soccer Club started up, as well as William Penn and Oskaloosa High School Sports. And then, let's see, what else we got on here? We also have one of those five tournaments. We figured we have a sports complex, we should run our own tournament. So promotions and fundraising actually help us put together a tournament, and we are going to hold that on April thirtieth and May first. So we're looking forward to seeing how that goes. We'll kind of get our hands wet and see what that's all about. And then, last but not least, my favorite, Trail Tram Tours. They are starting up again on May first. And so if you like one of those, reservations can be made online at mcrf.info, or you can call us at six four one six seven two two four nine nine. We do have lots of availability still on the schedule, but we are booking up fast. So any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Candace.
Okay, moving on. Item B. This is to consider approval of a six-month application for a Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor service area from the Oskaloosa Area Chamber Development Group and the use of the city square to host the various events from May first through October thirty-first. Application's complete and in order for approval. Do we have a motion supporting this?
Move.
Okay. Any discussion? I was kind of surprised it wasn't on the consent agenda.
Mayor, Council, the reason that I held this off of consent was because this is a change from years past. Typically, the Main Street Organization of Chamber has held these events within city streets. This particular request, though, as you noted, in fact, takes the entire city square at the park. And so they're looking at expanding what they do, expanding the number of activities and events. You saw the press that talked about an events coordinator being hired on a part-time basis. This all goes hand-in-hand in trying to utilize the city's downtown and the city square a little bit more. So the reason why, again, I pulled it off is it's a change. And again, from our perspective, the Main Street group is picking up work that we would do, and they're going to help facilitate this. So they essentially will run events in downtown. So if someone wants to hold an event where there's alcohol, they would coordinate through Main Street and the Chamber. So that's why I brought it to your attention. Didn't think, there's nothing necessarily controversial about it, just it's a change.
And the comments? Roll call, please.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Frustay.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Calgery.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C. This is consider a resolution directing sale of one point eight million dollars, subject to adjustment per the terms of the offering of general obligation refunding capital loan notes, Series two thousand and sixteen. City manager will receive sealed bids, electronic bids, and facsimile bids on the city of Oskaloosa, state of Iowa, one point eight million dollar offering of the general obligation refunding capital loan notes, Series two thousand and sixteen, by ten o'clock a.m. today. After a final call for sealed bids, the bids would then be opened in the best bid recorded. All bids presented to the Oskaloosa City Council for award at the meeting at six o'clock. So anyway, this resolution approves the sale for the best and most favorable bid. Do we have a motion supporting that?
Move.
Roll call, please. Whoops.
Presenting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Suzanne.
You want to know what that best bid was?
She's got the good news.
Okay, sorry about that, Suzanne.
That's all right. Suzanne Gerlock with Public Financial Management. We're the city's municipal advisor. And as the mayor just read, we took bids today for the refunding of the Series two thousand eight A bonds. We received five bids with true interest costs ranging from one point two seven percent to one point four two percent. So the closer those bids are together, the better that is for the city. That means the more competition there was to buy the bonds today. The winning bid came from Bankers Bank out of Madison, Wisconsin, at an interest rate, a total interest rate of one point two seven percent. So that's a wonderful, when do we get interest rates to start with a one? On one point one million dollars, that's a good day in the market. This represents net debt service savings of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This is, these bonds are paid for by the debt service levy, so this is going to be pure tax savings in the debt service levy, around, just over twenty thousand dollars per year for the life of the bonds that'll come off the debt service levy. Pricing, we did decide to go non-rated with these bonds. We were really successful in our rating last fall for the fire station, but we needed to, the fees, it's not cheap to get a rating. So we needed to make sure that the benefit of that rating was going to outweigh the price of getting that rating, and I strongly felt that after some market research, it wasn't going to. So we actually only priced seven basis points higher than the double A three-rated bonds we sold last year. So that's, I think that was the right choice. I don't think we could have recovered the rating fee with just seven basis points between now and two thousand and twenty-three. So very pleased with the pricing, and this is great news for the city and for the taxpayers. Any questions for me?
Nope.
Good save. Thank you.
Oh, you know, I did have one question. As I remember, we were doing this, some of this was electronic bid type stuff. How did that go?
It's parity, yep. And parity is free for the city, so that's why we recommend to use it. There's no cost to the city. Underwriters who want to participate, they pay a small fee to have access to the system. But I will say that the winning bidder, Bankers Bank, doesn't pay the fee. So they actually email our facts and their bids to us.
Oh, okay.
And so, yeah, but all the other bids were received on parity other than the winning bid. And Bankers Bank just doesn't want to pay the fee, and that's just savings for the, you know, that they can pass on to the, and through their bids.
Okay.
They're the only one we have that doesn't use it. We're not going to argue, though. They win the law.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thanks.
So we need a resolution approving the sale. Would anybody like to voice their support for that?
We have a.
We do have a motion second. Okay. Roll call then.
Moore.
Yes.
Frustay.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Calgery.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Okay. Thrown totally off my game.
It's all that reading you had to do.
Yeah, that takes us over to item D. To consider a resolution authorizing the redemption of the outstanding city of Oskaloosa, Iowa, general obligation capital loan notes, Series two thousand and eight A for the city of Oskaloosa, state of Iowa, dated May first of two thousand and eight. The proceeds from the one point eight million dollar GO refunding capital loan notes of two thousand and sixteen will be used to call one point six six five million of the Series two thousand and eight notes. So, and a significant amount of interest cost saved. Do we have a motion supporting that redemption?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Frustay.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Burnett.
Yes.
Calgery.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item E. Point tonight's my night for reading stuff. This is a, this is to consider an ordinance amending Oskaloosa Municipal Code ten point forty-two having to do with golf carts, ten point eighty having to do with multi-use recreation trail, and ten point oh eight, the traffic regulations in general. In May of two thousand and eleven, the Oskaloosa City Council approved ordinance thirteen oh five, which instituted a permit process and insurance requirement for golf carts on the recreation trail. In September of two thousand and twelve, ordinance thirteen twenty-six was passed the recreation trail. In September of 2012, ordinance 1326 was passed allowing golf carts on city streets. The permit process has resulted in 73 registered golf carts on file with the city. At this time, city staff is requesting that the city council provide direction on the current permit and registration process for the City of Oskaloosa. Staff is recommending eliminating the permitting process as well as mandatory insurance minimums. Since its inception, the administrative management of the golf cart permit program has been burdensome for both residents and city staff, and little apparent return on the investment. The golf cart registration and permit process requires applicants to visit the Oskaloosa Police Department. Applicants do not often meet at the city's insurance requirements or provide the necessary documents, so they often make several trips to the police department. Anyone seeking a permit must provide a copy of their license and insurance to the police department. The proof of insurance is filed with the city clerk. And monthly, the city clerk's office reviews the insurance for each golf cart registered and provides the police department with an update to ensure the golf carts are currently registered, are compliant. So the City of Oskaloosa requires proof of insurance showing liability coverage in an amount not less than $500,000 per person or $1 million per accident. Residents have voiced concern over this amount, often stating it's hard to obtain insurance for a golf cart that meets those requirements. State of Iowa Code 321A.21, Section 2B, requires that any vehicle have a minimum coverage of $20,000 for bodily injury, two or death of one person in any one accident, and, subject to said limit for one person, $40,000 for bodily injury to or death of two or more persons in any one accident, and $15,000 for injury to or destruction of property of others in, or others in any one accident. So ending the permit process for golf carts would free up staff time, allow the residents to drive their golf carts on the street without a permit, and no citations have been issued since the registration was originally required. Staff is recommending the city council consider an ordinance deleting Oskaloosa Municipal Code Sections 10.42.020C, 10.42.040, 10.42.050, 10.42.060, 10.42.070, 10.42.080, and amending Sections 10.80.030 and 10.08.010. From a budget perspective, ending the golf cart permitting process will save more staff time than actual funds expended for supplies to run the program. Currently, the police department supplies identification numbers for golf carts, and if the ordinance is approved, there will also be costs associated with the code change. Do we have a motion supporting this change? A second. Okay. Any discussion?
Well, you need to catch your breath after reading all that.
Yeah, my first grade teacher would be proud.
Do we need to send notices to the people that have existing insurance that it's, the requirements decreased, in case they just keep renewing and don't realize it?
Yeah. See, as it stands right now, they have to come into the police department in order to get registered for the next year, right?
So they'll be told then, okay.
Again, nothing has been adopted yet, so we wouldn't send a notice until it's adopted.
And this would be the first of three readings, right?
Oh, it's a three reading.
Unless you want to waive the three readings.
Let's see, we've got a.
Jake, how many people do you say actually registered? Do you remember?
It's a six reading, usually we say.
The number says 71 or 73.
71 since it started.
Yeah, 71.
Less, yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on waiving the rules?
Mayor Council, we did receive, I passed along a message, we did receive a request from the public, at least one member of the public, to restrict the age, to continue basically to permit and restrict the age of those that utilize the trail.
I didn't see that.
Did you?
They don't want senior citizens.
Sorry, I did not send that out, so I thought I did. But we did receive one email requesting that, so it's the only contact that staff has received, as far as I'm aware of.
They don't want senior citizens using the trail?
They would like, no, it was to restrict anyone from under 55 using the trail.
From under 55?
Yes. Without a permit.
Wow.
Really? Yeah, unreasonable, so.
So, we've got a motion in second regarding waiving the rules. Do we have any comments on that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Okay. And we also have a motion second on the ordinance itself, removing a number of sections. Do we have a, any additional comments on that? Roll call, please. Whoops.
Well, I guess just back to the comment you received there. I mean, if there's more information that comes forward, we could still go back and look at, at any time, whatever ordinance is that makes sense, if there's more information. I mean, that, to me, seems much different than what we're dealing with here. And so we'd want to look at that, I guess, in just its own light and any, any separate things. But we could do that as a council going forward.
Because we're only reducing the insurance and the complexity of doing this.
If there's something that we want to look at more, things that have impacted the trail or anything, we could do that in the future. It could be not.
There's already an existing section of the code that deals with regulation of the trail. And so, yes, there could be a future discussion.
Okay, good job. All right. Just want to be clear on that.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, we are the next item here. This is to consider a resolution approving a site plan for a 6,156-square-foot addition to Fellowship Bible Church located at 1,000 A Avenue West. Fellowship Bible Church has submitted a site plan for their property, citing consideration as 1.51 acres in area, is presently zoned UC, which is urban corridor, in the district with an AV, namely an A Avenue Commercial Corridor overlay. Proposed site plan illustrates a 6,156-square-foot building addition, sidewalk and parking improvements, and landscaping along A Avenue. The current and planned land use of this property is religious assembly, which is permitted in a UC district. The A Avenue Commercial Corridor overlay requirements have been met with the site plan. However, after performing a full site plan review, staff has communicated additional requirements to Fellowship Bible Church prior to the meeting. Of these requirements, they are requested, or it is requested that six of them be waived by the church. So there's an attached site plan review and responses for more information are there as well, as a part of the packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their April 11 meeting voting three yes, two no, to recommend the approval to the, of the site plan, subject to the following stipulations, and there are 11 of them. First is combining all the Fellowship Bible Church-owned parcels into one parcel and display the entire combined parcel on the plans. Second is to remove the guardrails from the city right-of-way along the parking lot on the west side of the property. Those guardrails were installed without a right-of-way permit. Parking areas have to have, number three, parking areas have to have a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer from any street property line. This is to recalculate the total number of parking spaces and show that the required number, 63 spaces, has been reached. No parking space should be positioned so that a vehicle exiting the stall has to back up onto the sidewalk, and that's per a code section. There's a, number four, to state the handicap parking requirements with the parking lot calculations on the title sheet, showing the plans where and how handicap parking signs will be installed. That's per code section. Plans, number five, showing, the plans show all parking facilities and their dimensions. All off-street parking dimensions have to meet the current Suda standards, including but not limited to the aisle width, the stall width, stall length, et cetera. Number six is an approved Iowa DOT right-of-way permit has to be obtained for all the work performed along A Avenue, namely Highway 92. Number seven is to install a four-foot-wide sidewalk along J Street, the west side of the property, from the southwest corner of the property north to the existing sidewalk. And number eight is to install curb and gutter along J Street. That's the west side of the property, eliminating the parking spaces on J Street along with the west side of the sidewalk, and restore the right-of-way along J Street between the sidewalk and the new curb and gutter into green space. Number nine is to meet the right-of-way tree plan requirements that are listed in Code Section 12.40. And number 10, since no new exterior lighting is planned as part of the project, just show that the existing lighting is adequate, the lighting plan, I guess. And then number 11 is the maximum impervious area for a UC district is 70%. So after completion of the project, the estimated impervious area would be 77% according to the plans. So additional areas should be converted to green space in order to meet the impervious area required for a UC district. So we do have a staff recommended denial of the proposed site plan because there's so much here, I suspect, and that the plans be resubmitted. I guess, from my position, I see this as highly complex as far as the conversation goes, and that we would really do better to be able to have a joint meeting with representatives of the church and, in a work session where we can start working through some of these things. So we better understand the reasoning of staff as to why things were written there. And then also, since we had planning and zoning, working through these as well, there were a number of them waived, and it's not particularly clear from the minutes of their meeting as to why that was. And so I guess I would look for a motion if anyone on the council would like to offer it, that we put this into a work session. So moved. Second. Okay. Any further discussion?
I guess somebody can have a comment. It'd probably be up to the church, but having their engineer at the, at the meeting would also be helpful, I think, if we're going to try and get all the questions answered in one meeting, so we don't have to keep coming back through it.
Okay. And Mr. Hodges, Mr. Johnson, are you the contact people if we were to do a session where we would have church representation as well as?
Yes.
That's more enthusiastic than I usually hear. Thank you very much. Okay. Any further comments? I'm putting this into a work session.
Can I ask for a date, for a range at least?
Well, I guess I would like to get this next Monday, if that would be possible.
Next week.
Yeah, so a week from today. Would that work?
We have to check with the engineer and stuff.
Okay. How about city council members?
I don't have a problem.
Okay. You're out of town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Out of town. I'm in Asia.
Two out. Okay. Some feelings to the rest of the council. Do you want to work with just the five, or do we want to push it off until these guys get back?
You guys go for it.
Did you say you couldn't make it to?
Okay, now we're down to four.
Now we're down to four.
Yeah, that's not going to work then.
That's the 25th, right?
Yep.
You're at some at 3:30. I don't know when you're planning on having it, but.
You know, I was thinking along the, somewhere in the area of 5 o'clock. Okay. How about if we push it off two weeks then?
So that'd be before, right before the council meeting?
Yep. So that'd be first of May?
Second of May.
Second of May. Okay. Does that work?
I'm still in Asia.
Okay.
Second of May before council?
Yeah. Okay, so that would be six of us here. Okay, why don't we shoot for that? Second of May at 5 o'clock. Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, takes us to item G. Consider a resolution approving the Oskaloosa Corridor and Wayfinding Improvement Study. City council approved the contract with RDG Planning and Design on June 15 of 2015 for the purpose of creating the A Avenue and Market Street Corridor and Wayfinding Improvement Study. Results of the study were shared with the city council as 95% complete, and study documents on December 7th of 2015. And since that time, the consultant completed the documents to 100% after they received additional input from the Iowa Department of Transportation. The input was not significantly different from what we already had, so there's no changes to speak of on the planned improvements as previously presented. So staff recommends the city council formally approve the wayfinding study as well as the corridor improvement study. Staff is also recommending the city council continue discussions about phasing in the improvements outlined in the reports. The first phase, approved for construction, is the wayfinding program throughout town, estimated at $65,000, and we budgeted $80,000 for the 2017 budget. Due to size of the completed study work, copies of the documents are available for public inspection at the city manager's office at 220 South Market Street. Do we have a motion to approve these two studies?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
We're approving them as studies only at this time. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, this is going to be where we're going to stick the, the wayfinding signs. That'll be the plan.
They'd be completed reports.
Correct. Yep.
But would that be the 65,000?
No, that's, that's one component of the overall study.
That's what I was asking as well.
The council's already approved through the, the budget, through the FY17 budget, that there would be $80,000 for that first phase.
For the study.
No, for the, the wayfinding signs.
Yeah, but that's next year's budget. We're still on 16. Okay, so that wouldn't happen until after July 1st.
Correct. But, but this item, what I'm requesting, is that council actually adopt the plan, so that we have some record that, yes, you in fact have reviewed it, you support it.
Other than just through the discussion of budget?
What's that?
Other than just through the discussion of budget?
Yeah, yeah. And, and what was presented in January. Yeah, beginning of January.
But any additional items that come up for expenditures?
Oh, yeah, any projects.
What I'm trying to say.
Yes, sir. That is correct. My apologies.
Everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah. Yeah, this does not automatically mean things are going, going to roll out. We'd absolutely have that through a budgeting process.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, that's done. That's it for the regular agenda. Reports from city staff. City manager?
Mayor, I have just one item on the agenda here, which would be the inclusion of a response on the Sheriff Avenue Reconstruction Project from staff. Obviously, at the last council meeting, the call of the public, we received some interesting comments from a member of the public, and we wanted to make sure that we provided a response to that. And so that is included in the packet. As far as an actual item to have further discussion about that project, being Sheriff Avenue, I still would like to have a study session in May, so the second meeting in May, or potentially in between the two meetings, where we would invite the residents, the property owners, to review the proposed changes to the project, which would be maintenance-only reconstruction on the east and west ends, and then essentially leaving the rest of it to be cold patched as needed. So, no sidewalks on Sheriff, but there would be an attempt to get the sidewalks done on North Third.
Just go down to the trail?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, to get to the, yeah.
So I at least wanted to get a response when we received the, the comments from call of the public. I'd like to make that our, our process going forward, that within two weeks, we would have something back for the public. So that's what we've done with this item.
One, one question on that last piece. And this is just something to consider, and I don't know the answer, but if we connect sidewalks into the trail, and I'm not, I'm sure this isn't the only place, but if, if we, from a matter of policy, start utilizing the wrecked trail instead of putting in sidewalks in an area, you know, not just to connect to them, but in this case, we said that's a better way to divert traffic from the schools, and so we put it onto the trail. Are we then, in essence, making that a sidewalk? And the reason I know, or I want to talk about that, is then that we turn that into something that needs to be maintained, particularly like snow removal, as a sidewalk?
You mean the sidewalk? I understand what you're saying there.
I just don't know. I, I don't, I don't look at it. It's kind of a two-part. I'd
still say, I mean, did you notice where the, the staff saw quite a few people walking down Sheriff Avenue? So there is a sidewalk need there. We just aren't going there yet. And, and it's, we had that plan to get to the sidewalk to get to the wrecked trail anyway. But, I mean, I don't know why you're saying it, but I don't think it makes the trail a sidewalk.
No.
It's access to the trail.
And I just want to make sure as we present it, that we don't, that we at least consider that. Because there was at least some comments at the last meeting that we don't need a sidewalk because we have the trail in the back of the properties. And so, and then in my mind, it's kind of changing, potentially, that portion of the trail. Now, if we're still looking at it the way you're saying, then I, I don't disagree. I just don't want to create a situation where something changes or a, you know, somebody, you know, because we've had, for instance, in past meetings where we didn't have sidewalks clean, individuals that were handicapped that couldn't use the sidewalks and why we needed to keep them clean. And, and I just don't want to create a problem by trying to deal with this one in a specific way. As long as we talk about it, and we all agree the direction we're going, and clarify it, I just didn't want to just blow past it.
They did say, they've been told in the past, that they don't need a sidewalk because of the wrecked trail. But I don't, you know, I think that's been, I'm not saying they
I just didn't want to just blow past it.
They did say, they'd been told in the past that they don't need a sidewalk because of the wreck trail, but I don't, you know, I think that's been, I'm not saying they made it up, I'm just saying that wasn't correctly stated when they were told that. My opinion.
Yep.
Perfect.
Anything else?
I guess I would say it may help us to say welcome to the trail, or have some clear delineation point to address that, so signage, I think, would go a long ways.
And I think at the public endpoint where the neighbors come in, that could be talked about, that, okay, now, we're including this sidewalk to the trail, but that is not let you off the hook someday for the sidewalk on Sheriff Avenue.
Exactly.
Good point.
Okay. City clerk, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
City attorney, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Um, city council member, Steve, how about you? Tom?
No, I won't make you read anything. Thank you.
Yeah, I actually have a couple things tonight. Number one, we got the, I believe it was a letter or an email about starting to enforce the parking ordinances downtown, I think it was starting today. I guess I'm not sure I'm, I got some feedback from the public, and I'm not sure, we just don't need to do a little bit more review there. You know, we want to have good parking downtown for the businesses. I don't know that the two-hour ordinance that we've had, for as long as I know, is right, should be something different. I don't even know if we have a problem. And so, I guess my point is, I'd be interested in taking a look at what that ordinance should be before we just start handing out tickets. You know, I think we need input from whether it's Chamber or Main Street, MCDG, maybe a survey of the downtown merchants, I don't, I don't know what it is, but I'd be interested in learning more about that, potentially having a future agenda item. Now, if I'm the only one that's concerned with it, I'm just interested in whether there's something we should get down.
We do have a problem with the two-hour parking.
Okay, I just have never had anybody contact me.
One of the people I think that are probably abusing it the most is the courthouse, and the other one has, Hawkeye Real Estate, are two of them that I can think of. If you drive around the square, you'll find a business owner parked right in front of his business. And when I see a license plate that says "Photos" in front of a photo shop, that kind of tells me something.
And I'm not saying we don't have people, right, I'm not saying we don't have people violating the existing ordinance, I'm just trying to figure out, do we need an ordinance? Or is the ordinance right for what we need in our downtown? I mean, to me, the ordinance should support a vibrant downtown, and if we truly do have a problem, I don't, I don't disagree, I just don't know what information I get to base that on, or what I have to base that on, is my only point. But, yeah, whatever ordinance we have, we should enforce, I agree with that.
I'd like to have a study to see what it is.
So, that's, that's something I would like for at least consideration, Mayor.
And council member, since another council member, at least another one, has said they would like to have an item, I'll put an item on the agenda to at least then formally direct staff to study it, or however you'd like to see us proceed, so that we start gathering information, that would be important for you to be able to make a decision.
Appreciate that.
We'll make sure the study doesn't go just to the business owners and the Chamber, because they're part of the problem.
And again, we can go over that when we have the item, but, yeah, we'll tailor it however council wants us to tailor that.
Then, the second item I just wanted to make a comment on, is at our last meeting, we had an item to, to do a study regarding the loading zone, and I supported that study, and I still ultimately do, because I think we need to learn whether we need it, but one of the things that was brought up was because we needed to facilitate a loading zone for the delivery trucks. And it's just interesting, since our last meeting, I've seen three times where deliveries being made by those trucks, and the alleys were open, and they literally parked right in front of the alleys in the street. So, I guess it, it makes me wonder whether we really do have an issue. One was on the north side of the square, and, and twice was in front of Smokey Road, but on all three instances, the alley was open, or they would have pulled in, or what they were, they were trying to do, and so I'm not sure if we create a loading zone, whether we're going to change anything, so I just wanted to throw that out.
Really good point.
For something I've seen since that meeting.
And what I tried to get across was, I wanted them to go to the truck companies and ask them, their management, is this an issue with your truck drivers? Is there a problem that needs some to, because if they don't care, I don't care.
Well, and I want to point out, I'm not even going to say the companies, but it was more than one company, it wasn't just one company. And then, the last thing, since we set the, the study session for the, the church site plan, and I won't be here, I just want to comment, I think it's a good project, it'll improve our corridor, I know we need to follow our guidelines, our ordinances, but I think it's a good project, and I hope we can figure out a way to meet in the middle somewhere and get the project done. I also, I know staff has to do their job, and I got feedback from the church members that they thought our staff has done a great job to this point working with them, so I applaud Akilish and his team for that, but I just hope that we can, we can find some middle ground. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Okay. I guess I have one letter that I want to share with the council, that, on behalf, this is from Dan Lambie, who's president of the Arbor Day Foundation. Dear Tree City USA supporter, on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I write to congratulate Oskaloosa on earning recognition as a 2015's Tree City USA. Residents of Oskaloosa should be proud to live in a community that makes the planning and care of trees a priority, so we're one of more than 3,400 Tree City USAs with a combined population of 140 million people, and this is a program that's been in place since 1976. So, that's nice, and I was thinking, okay, that's routine stuff, because we do that every year, you know, since I've been mayor, it's something that's gone on, and, and as Dave Dixon, when you were mayor, it was happening then, and so, anyway, I signed a proclamation today, and then when I came in, I was presented with this, which is a Tree City USA Arbor Day Foundation award for 20 years in a row as a Tree City USA. So, anyway, I applaud Craig Cohen and the crew that he works with as far as making